Good morning, everyone. We're going to start the meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, January 30th, 2025. Let's introduce ourselves on the dais. Kristi, we'll start with you.
Kristi Rischel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Harvey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerold-Dumas, Commissioner.
Alicia Reese, Hamilton County Commissioner.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. And I do want to note that we would like to keep in our thoughts the folks that perished in flight going into DC last night. Sixty-seven people died from that plane crash. And I know the details are still sketchy, but what a tremendous loss for those individuals. So please join me in silent prayer. I'm going to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summerold-Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't have any speakers' cards. Is there anybody online to comment? Okay, thank you. We'll move straight into comments and motions of the commissioners. Commissioner Summerold-Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Professional Development Academy, as I think I mentioned it last week, the AI Leadership Academy is really very interesting. And we started our kickoff last week, and this week we will have our second meeting. And it's a six-week opportunity to learn more about AI. And I'm always open to learn about new things. And so I had an update with the Metro leaders the week before, but I forgot to mention it because they're probably watching in the room and wondering why I didn't bring up about Metro in the update. And what they're planning on doing, what they have done is just outstanding. So I thank them, and I know the residents of Hamilton County thank them. We had our emergency management, our first quarterly meeting on Monday. Extremely interesting. They're doing some, also some new things, have some new staff on. And looking forward to our next meeting and how we need to be prepared as a county for any emergencies that come up. I attended the land bank meeting also on Tuesday. And they're doing lots of, as far as the real estate issue, I found out something new because as they gave us a graph, there are 55% of the properties that the port owns are eligible for the public to bid on and apply for. And it seems like a bigger number than usual. And so if you want to get on the Port Authority website and kind of look at, now, some of them may need lots of repairs, some may need demolition, but it's worth taking a look if you're trying to find a home that's not as expensive. Thank you. Then you might want to take a look. And then I had mentioned last week that the White House was having, starting their briefings again, but it's actually NACO who is tracking the first 100 days of our new president in office. And so it was extremely interesting. The whole conversation for about 30 minutes was talking about how they had to go back and the federal funding that they had stopped, how they're starting again, it really didn't stop, and why people thought it stopped, and what areas it covered. And so trying to kind of about-face on what had happened really stopping federal funding is unbelievable for a lot of entities, agencies, for the county, for a lot of things that we're doing. So they were trying to backtrack a little bit and say how that accidentally happened. And so I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you very much. I had a meeting with Mike Morowski of the Human Services Chamber, and certainly with the original executive order that had come out about freezing the, a lot of the nonprofits. And they wanted to get some answers and work together. And while that is not the case today, one of the things I also met with Jeff about was, and Anson, was getting a listing, and I think they're working on it or almost finished with everything, but a listing of what do we have that have the federal dollars in a chart? And then on the other side, what are these other projects? And these are all priorities that our board has approved. But what on the other side is not federal dollars? And then how are they funded? Because what that instance taught me was, I have, we were inundated with calls. Everywhere I went, people were stopping us. And they kind of expect that as electors, we know a little bit more than what they would know as the general public, and obviously everything was in a frenzy. They were told that it doesn't affect Medicaid, but then people couldn't, you know, get into the portals. So it was just a hot mess. And I think that it's going to be a lot more of a hot mess as we go these next four years. We keep saying four years. I'm saying the next four days because these things are happening on a daily basis. They seem to, they seem to break around 11 o'clock at night. And then when you wake up, you say, oh, my goodness, all hell has broken loose. What do we do? So I just think getting, one is getting us used to a new pace because it's a fast pace. And I think if there's things that we have, a lot of times we get things approved. And I always said this because I've been in, this is my third government now, is sometimes, and we're doing a little bit better, but we move very slow. You know, because we got to take it to this group, we got to get the contract signed. We vote on something in the budget, then we vote on it again to get a contract. Then we vote on it again to try to get the money to the people. And I would hate that we vote on something and people think it's happening. And then before we can blink our eyes because we're dealing with a different type of federal government, right, it doesn't happen. So one, getting our arms around so we could try to stay ready so we don't have to get ready. And moving things up even at a faster pace. So I look forward to also meeting with the auditor as well as the treasurer. And I've also met with the prosecutor on how we might be able to move a little quicker on things that we have approved so that the money is in the bank before they can say we're not going to fund it. We've got several projects in HUD that we've approved and plans and all those things, and affordable housing projects. I don't know what's all affected, but I think getting our hands around these things are, could be affected, and we got to move quickly. I do want to thank Anson Twirley because he also explained something to me, the difference between we've been awarded and we got a contract. It's two different things. So now I'm going to be asked the question, they say, we've been awarded. I mean, do you have a contract? Because if you didn't have a contract, there's a chance that the award, you'll never see it. It never makes it to the bank. So those kind of terminology things were helpful for me so that I can communicate to the public what's going on. I was concerned about the, the safety range formerly known as the Lincoln Heights gun range because we had $4 million from federal government. And honestly, this board, we put in $20 million. We put in the most for it, but that $4 million, we had to jump through so many hoops. It slowed the project really down because we had to wait for environmental people. And then they weren't, you know, they were taking all day, they were taking their time. And, you know, really, we could have been further down the road without that four. It was $4 million, but it cost us, you know, almost half a year or more in going through hoops. So I would like to know about that. Do we have a signed contract on that? Or do we just have, what you said, an award but not the contract? So having that list of things, the emergency management, that's very important as well. And we've got some federal dollars. And I'm here to say that I don't want any of those projects stopped. We have $5 million we were putting toward a soccer, a private soccer facility. We didn't get it with the women's soccer. That $5 million went back in. I'm not saying I want to just use it all over, but I don't want to stop those projects. We've got to move forward. Those are very, very, very important. But there may be some other projects. So for me to just help, if I can, when they say something, I can hit a button and I can go to this spreadsheet. And I'll know that this is, you know, affected by federal, this will not be affected, and we can move forward. So we can learn from what happened and get ourselves prepared. But I do want to say again what I said before, we've got to now move differently. We can't say, oh, we've been doing this, our government been working for 234 years. It's not working the same anymore. And we've got to be able to have fighters, we got to have some lawyers that, you know, ready to fight on behalf of the taxpayers of Hamilton County. And we also have to be able to quickly distinguish between what's happening and what's not happening. There may be some times when something happens, it's a 911. Everybody got to stop what they doing and get on this. So just getting that type of mindset ready for, because this is not the end. This is just the beginning of a lot of different things. And I'm not willing to just roll over when this county and this city has worked really hard to come together. Yes, we have issues that we still got to resolve, but I've been around. And I, when we had the unrest, and I don't want that, I want to keep people working together. So I'm hopeful that we move in a tone of one Hamilton County. The next thing that I did attend the Hamilton County Land Bank Reutilization Corporation Board of Directors meeting and did do that. The other thing I wanted to highlight that I met with Mr. Alito on in his report to us, it talked about an urban design study, design on the banks, the Ohio banks. And in there, it says, "We're in the process of bidding an urban design study for the final lots at the banks. The study will provide recommendations on highest and best use for the remaining lots, including discussions of various restrictions included in the stadium lease." And I, that brought some pause to me because we are in the middle, supposedly, in the middle of a renegotiation of the lease. And what I don't want to do is make the bank's urban design study as something that becomes a part of the discussion when we have a lease that has a number of bad things that need to be done. I had recommended, considering that the Bengals have, the Bengals ownership have until, I guess, June of this year before they just tell us what they're going to do. Are they going to continue with this lease? Or are they going to do something different? Or are they going to do something different? I would, I had recommended, and I may be in the minority, if we waited this long, we paused for COVID, why can't we pause past June until we just, until we, until we know if we're going to have this particular lease? Or are we going to have a different type of lease? But I would hate for this urban design to be a major nugget in the negotiation. And I don't think we really should be having a lot of discussions with the Bengal ownership without talking about this new lease and the intentions. The other thing I wanted to bring up to people, because they're reading stuff in the paper, they're seeing stuff on TV, how does this process work? Number one, the thing, you went to the polls, you voted in 1996, you voted for two stadiums. Number two, people were mad because the lease was not on the ballot, and the lease was discussed by other county commissioners. We were not here. This group was not here. But people felt like they got screwed. And they did, in terms of the taxpayers. Now, this lease is up to be expired unless they extend it. It is in the hands of the Bengal ownership if they want to extend it. And there's 10 years left on this lease. So this is not an outdated lease, out of commission lease. This is the current lease, and it has 10 more years on it. The next thing I wanted to say is that, and I would like to get a legal opinion on this. I was just going by what they tell me. Us as three commissioners, we cannot be together or meet together unless we're in executive session. I'd like to get a legal opinion, because it seems a little odd that our names would be on the lease. It has a space for three commissioners. But we were not in on the negotiations. What do I mean by that? We have executive sessions, but we have to get information that's given to us, and probably with good intentions, but is given to us by the administrator and the lawyers. We are not sitting across the table eyeball to eyeball for every single meeting. However, at the end, it only has the three names, and I think the administrator gets to sign too. Those are the names that will be on this lease. I have some concerns, because we are not the three people negotiating. But on the lease, these are the people that will be on here. You'll see these commissioners' names from 20 years ago. So people think that we're in the rooms. We're not in the rooms all the time. We're not at the coffees. We're not on the emails. I, I got the emails maybe after the media looked for the emails. Then I got a copy before the media got it, but not that far in advance. I was unaware of some of the back and forth that's going on. So it's kind of strange, because the commissioners, we're not the negotiators. We're not the ones that hear word for word, eyeball to eyeball. We're not in that. So I want people to understand, it's really their lawyers and our lawyers and the administrator that are the ones that know everything. We know what they provide to us. And of course, you can't give everything on a conversation. You don't know, you know, on that. So I wanted people to know how that happens. Then it's brought to us, and then it's brought to us with an interpretation, and then we move with it. I will say that in this lease that I have combed many, many times, there are so many sections, and maybe, you know, the lawyers might say, well, it doesn't matter if you gave away to management. Well, I got to check with the voters. Do they want to give away the management of the place? Somebody else might say, it doesn't matter, they got all the concessions. Well, does the voters, the taxpayers care that we give away the concessions? Someone else might say, they don't care about giving away 98% of the parking. And we paid for a billion dollars for these garages. Well, the taxpayers might have some concern about that. Someone might say, they don't care about that you got to pay, the taxpayers pays all the utilities, the water bill, the light bill, the MSD, and don't have no say. Well, maybe the taxpayers might have some concern. Someone say, oh, they don't care if you, if they control all the screens. Well, maybe the taxpayers might. They might say, well, they don't care if they don't pay the real estate taxes. The county is on the hook for all taxes. And by the way, they got exempt by the state to pay sales tax, and the sales tax fund is how we pay for the stadium. The taxpayers might be concerned. But I'm not in the room, we're not in the room. We're in the executive sessions, but not eyeball to eyeball, line item by line item with the Bengal ownership. So I wanted people to understand that. But at the end, there's only three names that I see on here. And there's three commissioners. And it's a yes or it's a no. I also want to say that the people that are negotiating, the news came out with some of those people. And I just want to be more transparent than waiting on the news to tell the people. Those people should probably come and present themselves and be seen. These are the people that are in the rooms, at the coffees, on the email chains, on the meetings that we ain't at, that are going to be in the room doing the talking. And one of the groups that was hired, that they have an article on, I think, today, we met them, but I've never received a report on what they did. Their contract is up and it's got to be renewed. But I like to see a report about what they have done. They just signed with another team. Now, I'm not looking for somebody that's just, doesn't have the time to put in, because unlike other teams, they're not trying to get out of a upside-down lease. Our lease is special. Nobody has this in the country. And it's hard to come up out of something where you, I mean, they put zero down for the facility. I mean, what are they going to do? Say, oh, I, out of the goodness of my heart now, want to put some money up? It's going to be a tough struggle. So I would like to know what they were doing, because one of the things they said, they could, we're going to open the books. The books ain't been opened. They said, we're going to get the naming rights. We had to find out in the news, only because Paycor is being sold. That's the only way the taxpayer knew about it. So I would like to get a report from them. Their, like, their contract is up, I understand, and they want to be renewed. But I don't really know what you did the first year. You might have did a lot of stuff, but I don't know nothing about it. So I would like to get a report on what has been done and what they were able to do. So again, I think that we need to focus on the lease, because there's a lot of distractions. And all the distractions is away from the lease. But all decisions is based on the lease. And I appreciate, I have been pushing for more events and concerts, not just at that stadium, but both stadiums. In the lease, it says it's supposed to be a third party that both entities agree on, that has experience at bringing concerts. And most concerts promoters, they book 20 to 30 cities. In fact, Mimi, they just announced Glorilla's coming. Well, Glorilla is on a tour, and Cincinnati is one of the stops. So we got to have people that's on tours that have the stops. Now, I appreciate we get one big concert a year, plus the music festival. But we haven't moved from that. I'm looking for more things. Where's SmackDown at? We brought SmackDown, but because we don't have the management, administrator, I got to go over there and beg and hope you put SmackDown in it. Cleveland got SmackDown. I want everything. I want it all to come to Hamilton County. And I would like the person, whoever the company is, to come and present to us every year, here's what we're trying to do. And when you have a third party, they open up all the books. Here's what, how much revenue came in. Here's where the revenue came from, not just the rental. We get $100,000 per rental, and we get 50% of it. But what was made from these concerts? But we don't get a report, we get an announcement. And in the lease, we were supposed to have somebody. And I asked for the paperwork, and I think Mr. Ludo said, it was before his time, it was a handshake, but no paperwork. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking for, for on behalf of the taxpayers, so that we can get this information out. And we got to find out, is this what the taxpayers want? Lastly, if they say, well, Reese, they not agreeing with you. Well, let's put it on the ballot and see what direct, we'll hear directly from what they want, and whatever they want, I'm willing to live with. Because they're the ones that's paying for everything. So that's what I'm, I'm concerned about, is that we're doing a lot of things dancing around the lease. And I would think that this, any RFPs that require anything in this particular lease, I would hope we put it on hold to June. Mr. Ludo also, we talked about, I want to make sure. I'm not for, they say, oh, well, we can extend the time and keep extending the time and keep extending the time under this lease. I think we need to have a plan of where we're going for this. So I hope that we're not moving in that direction already. It expires in June, and we say, oh, we're going to extend, we're going to extend 30 more days, 60 more days, kick it down the can. And it still is on this, this current lease. It was negotiated a long time ago, but it's the lease that we're under, and it has 10 more years on it. So I wanted to explain that, because people were asking me, are y'all the ones in there? No, we're not. Are y'all the ones over eyeball to eyeball? No, we're not. Are y'all, did you know about these emails? No, I did not. And I think the tone of those emails were pretty strong, and it was strongly against the county and the taxpayers of Hamilton County. So wanted to bring that up. That's why I always, everything we talk about, I go back to the lease, because that's the only thing that's binding. So I would, I wanted to put that out there so that my colleagues knew that I had some concern about, not that we're going to have an urban design, but I want to make sure it's not another stall tactic like we do. We got to have a master plan. Then they jump up and say, we didn't, what master plan? We weren't trying to be a part of it. And then we stuck with the master plan, cost a whole lot of money, and we still don't have a deal at the table. Now we coming back, we need an urban design. What we going to do with all these lots? We ain't doing nothing with these lots. If it's tied to this lease, we need to get this lease under control, then maybe we can have some freedom with the lots that are going to be developed on the banks. And that, and to me, June is not that far away. We waited all this time. I think June would not be something that's that far away. So that's, by opinion, I might not be, I might be probably, I'm only one vote, everybody. But I am a vote, and I'm going to represent the 218,000 people that elected me who said they had some concerns. And I'm going to bring their concerns forward, so at least everything's on the table. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff, before we continue on, could you talk a little bit about, it has been in the press quite a bit about who is on the team negotiating with the Bengals? And talk a little bit about the outside consultant that we have engaged to lend this national perspective, you know, what's going on in the market? What is, what's a fair lease? What's a fair expectation by way of investment? And who would be the funding partners? We've heard all these conversations. It's been in the news lately. And so could you just talk a little bit about that? We've talked before about David Abrams and his firm, and how they're working with the county. But I think it might be helpful to get a further explanation of that.
Sure. So just very briefly, in terms of the, as we sit down and talk about a lease of this magnitude and scale, obviously, it requires a lot of different skillsets and expertise at the table. There are individuals and institutions, both in the county and within the community, that have history with this current lease, but no one that was involved directly negotiating this current lease. To my knowledge, I didn't even know that there's anyone still around that was directly involved with negotiating the current lease. But, but we do have institutional knowledge that was around. For instance, we have individuals at the prosecutor's office. And the prosecutor's office is, as the county, as the attorney of record for the Board of County Commissioners, the prosecutor's office takes the lead in, from a legal perspective, in providing that support to the county. And then we bring in around that, the, the different skillsets and expertise that we need to make sure that we're getting the best possible deal on all fronts for, for the taxpayer and the community, as well as working something that, that provides the Board of County Commissioners with responses to its policy goals on what it wants to see in a, in a new lease. So in addition to the prosecutor's office, Commissioner Dreehouse, as you mentioned, and there's reference to Inner Circle Sports, David Abrams, you mentioned. There's other members of his team that, that we've engaged as well. Inner Circle has been involved with helping other teams and communities across the country with, with lease discussions, with lease negotiations, with capital financing decisions related to large stadia, arenas, et cetera. They've done this work in many other communities, both on behalf of professional sports, or on behalf of communities that have professional sports teams, as well as on behalf of teams. So they, they have that experience on both sides of the ledger to understand not only what a community's priorities are, but also how a, how a team, how a professional sports team, be it in the NFL, Major League Baseball, NHL, et cetera, looks at these decisions in terms of, of coming up with a new lease and capital financing decisions on those leases, on those leases. So Inner Circle Sports has, provides a wealth of experience and expertise in that regard. We also have other experts that we have at the table as well. We have the board's financial advisor is PFM that helps us with all these decisions. So we have a crew from PFM that is helping us analyze all the financial decisions related to the, the lease and financing decisions that would have to be made and associated with a new lease. We have Frost Brown Todd, who's been our longtime counsel on the riverfront, that have, has a tremendous amount of history and expertise related to the current deal. Again, not negotiating that deal, but understanding it and understanding the ins and outs of it, and how it has been lived on the riverfront and in the community. We have Bond Counsel in Dinsmore that also helps us, from a legal perspective, understand how we can make sure that we're correctly and creatively putting financing strategies in place that make the most effective use of, of the taxpayer dollar, which is limited to that, that riverfront sales tax fund. So those, those are just a few of the entities that we have at the table helping the, the county do this. And it's a, it's a good, solid team of professionals that, that know their work inside and out, that are experts in their field, are experts with what's going on locally, but also have an understanding and expertise as to what's going on nationwide. The board has said on numerous occasions, it is looking for a new lease, a market lease. And we have the experts at the table that understand that intuitively in terms of what that, what that means, and can help the board make decisions in that regard. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to get some clarifying information about the, the national team that we've engaged. We did not, they did not have that last time. And I don't think there was a sense last time that that mattered. But this board has been very clear about the fact that we want a lease that's fair, that reflects the market, what are other communities doing? Yeah, so we, we need that information. And so I think it's really important that we have taken a different approach to negotiating a lease with the Bengals, and that the consultant, the national consultant is a really important piece of that, in addition to the local knowledge base that helps us come to decisions as well. So I, I, I think we've mentioned David Abrams in the past. But I, from my vantage point, that's a really important difference between last time and this time. And, and we're taking that to heart as we move forward with negotiations.
Can I just make one, I think it was one correction, if I'm understanding. There was a national, none of the people that was mentioned, and none of us were here. And I want to be clear on that. But there was a national person that was doing deals here, and I think Chicago and all that. The person's no longer around. But there was a national person that came in. And I think that's why we, as a board, we're very diligent about making sure when we pick the person, it'd be different than what they had last time. But they did have a person that was supposed to have some, whole lot of, had done NBA, had done NFL deals. And so that's why I'm saying, I don't care who it is, David Abrams or whomever, I still want to report on what it is that they're doing. And then I also want, I think the people need to know, who is the negotiator? Is it going to be David Abrams? Is it going to be Frost Brown? Who is the person that's, when you walk in? Because we not in the meetings. Who is the person that would be, is it you, Jeff? Who's the person? Because you got to have a lead person. Is that you? Is it David Abrams? Is it David Abrams? And I just haven't had a report from him, but we, we selected him and everything, but it's been a year, the contract is up, they're gonna possibly renew, but we need to have some paper on what has happened. So who is, could you tell the people who the negotiator is when you walking in those rooms that we're not in?
Yeah, so the, from a, just from a structural perspective, the prosecutor's office has the, the lead from a legal perspective, they are the attorney of record for the county. And then depending upon, and again, these discussions are gonna be multifaceted, there's gonna be discussions focused, as you mentioned, Commissioner, on the lease, where in terms of driving business terms, Inner Circle may be more the, the focal point of those discussions. There may be other questions and, and work sessions on, on what does the project look like? What is the renovation project in the stadium going to look like? And we've, we have had Frost Brown Todd that has been driving the work of Messer, AECOM, those folks who have brought cost data and capital renovation data to play, and that's probably where, where they will provide the most input. So we're gonna be flexible and do this in a way that makes the most use of the talent and skills that we have at the, at the table, focusing that through the prosecutor's office at the end of the day.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So I wanted to build off the other piece of information that both commissioners have mentioned, and that is the whiplash that we are suffering from the federal government, given the activities of the current administration and what it means on the ground to the work of the county and all of our partners in the county. We've all been out and about talking to individuals who are concerned about the impacts, whether it's a nonprofit or a hospital, local hospital, or the addiction response work that we do. There, there are a myriad of organizations impacted by, including the county, impacted by what is happening in DC. And so it is not helpful to have decisions come out and the next day they're reversed and you don't know what to expect and people are on hold with their funding, you know, because they just don't know what to anticipate. It is not helpful, as it touches so many things that we do here at the county by way of saving lives and keeping this community safe. EMA, I talked to Nick Crossley about this, sounds like everybody else did too, about what the impact would have been to EMA and, and emergency management in this community. You know, people, keeping people in their home through some of the programs that we've stood up by way of home improvement, keeping businesses open. I mean, we've done all this community work and to have that put on hold or to have it removed is, is gonna be a problem and will hinder our growth. And so, and there's a good example sitting in the room right now, related to the Office of Addiction Response, which is funded in part, in large part, by the federal government. And what it means to have that kind of whiplash happen as they try to move through the grants that are saving lives in this community. And so it's, it's just very challenging. And so it's been mentioned, where, and thank goodness, Ann Centurie is keeping track of all things to give us updates, but it is, it's, it's been hard to keep up. And, and so I move into my second comment, which is, I attended two different meet and greets with the Speaker of the House, Matt Huffman in Ohio, and then the Senate President, Rob McCulley, who was over on the Senate side in Ohio. These are the, they call them the big three, the governor, the Speaker of the House, and the President of the Senate. And so the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House were both in Cincinnati within the past week. And so I had an opportunity through government strategies to go over and meet them and bend their ear just a little bit about priorities here in Hamilton County and make sure that we have strong relationships with the folks at the state level that oftentimes serve as a pass through for the federal dollars, to make sure they understand the importance of, of what's happening in DC. And then the decisions that are being made in the state of Ohio, the, the operating budget is about to drop, and so we will wait to see what's there. But we've already voiced collectively through our lobbyists what the priorities are of Hamilton County and how important it is that we continue to receive funding through the state government as well. So I, I attended those. I was grateful to Chip Gerhart and Jim Benedict and Ann Sessler for hosting those meet and greets so that we can have firsthand conversations with some of the leaders in the state. I also attended the press conference that's been referenced about Billy Joel and Rod Stewart coming to town. This is an example of what we have been asking for, which is that that stadium be used for these concerts, large and small, so that the community has an economic benefit and we, you know, have these, these good concerts coming in. So glad that that is happening. We need to see more of it and all, all of us have said the same, but it was, I was glad to celebrate that we are at least having this concert come in the near future with Billy Joel and Rod Stewart, for the older set, I might say. I'm very familiar with both of those artists, listened to them when I was in high school. So also attended the CCAO meeting, I'm the Vice President of the organization, and we are trying to figure out the priorities that we will go to the state with. Indigent defense reimbursement is always at the top of the list. We are not getting 100% of the reimbursement that we deserve from the state for the work we do on their behalf. By way of indigent defense, we get about 68% of that money. We should be getting 100% of that money. So it, it has a tremendous impact on our budget and all the other things we do. So we will be advocating once again for that 100%, see if we can increase that amount a little bit higher than what we have currently. We had conversations about housing and the state's role in helping develop more housing in the state of Ohio, whether it's rural or urban. We all are in desperate need of more housing and more resources to do that work. We talked about jail funding, which is something that's always on the radar and trying to get some of those dollars for the more urban communities in the state of Ohio. To date, it's all gone to the rural communities, which I'm happy to support, but we are trying to get some money that would be specific to urbans. Otherwise, we're not gonna see any of that money under the current formula. And then also went to the OKI lunch, the head of the Department of Transportation in Kentucky was the speaker. It was, it was good conversation, there was conversation there about what's going on with the federal government related to the Brenn Spence Bridge and whether or not that project is in jeopardy, given what's happening in the White House. And so, so far, so good, but it, it feels like everything's in flux and everything is uncertain. And again, it's just not a helpful atmosphere when you're trying to get the work done, particularly on the Brenn Spence Bridge. And so we are hopeful and to date, we expect that that funding will move forward for that project. So that's some of the, the things that have been going on. It's been a busy week. I think it's gonna continue to be busy, but there's a lot going on. So thank you, Commissioners, for your comments as well, because we're all out in the community talking to different people and, and who have a variety of priorities that they want to make down. Commissioner Dumis, did you have something further?
Yeah, I was gonna see if you brought it up, but Tuesday night, we had a meeting in Madeira as it relates to the sewer system. It's the Kenwood Hills hearing. And so some of the residents want a sewer, a new sewer system, some don't. Lively discussion, this was our second hearing after waiting to get information from MSD. Just really excited because MSD was able to write a grant and get approved of $4 million to help out those specific residents and to override the $12,000 that they would have to, to give for that purpose. Still, some are in between as it relates to whether or not they want a new system, theirs works. But I wanted to see if you wanted to bring up the next steps for anybody who's listening. And also, lastly, I represent the board on our public safety meeting and human services meeting committee for CCAO, so I'll be involved in both, both of those.
Yeah, so Holly is in the room. Holly, I'm gonna ask you to come up to make sure I don't state this incorrectly, but my understanding is that, and thank you for bringing up the public hearing, and thank you to the residents that came out, to MSD, to Commissioner Kesterman, who was there, to make sure we had a lively conversation, informative conversation about that project out there. So Holly, the next steps are that a resolution is gonna come before the board, is it next Thursday?
Anticipate receiving that today from MSD, legislation moving the project forward for the board consideration next week. And the main reason, exactly what Commissioner Summer Dumis spoke of for the timeliness of this, is because the, the funding from the state does have some timelines that we have to meet in order to receive that funding to offset that $12,000 cap to those residents.
Thank you. And I know we'll talk about it further next week, but it is a, a product of the process that's in place when people want to get sewored in a community where they aren't. There's this petition process, and if 50% or more, a majority of the residents want to move forward, that clicks in and then we, we engage in this process. And that's exactly what has happened. We've had a couple of public meetings out there. There has been a difference opinion in some cases, but, well, we, we know that. But MSD has really done a nice job of trying to ameliorate some of the concerns related to cost, wherein the $12,000 that would have been paid by every one of those residents tapping into the public system on the public side is now going to be borne by a grant that came in through MSD. And so that's extremely good news for those property owners. It is not the total cost, because they'll have the private side costs, which will vary from property to property. But it was noted that the, at the hearing, that the value to each parcel is $77,000 to tap into the system. And so that is a great value for those homeowners. And so I, if someone mentioned it at the hearing, and I, I wanted to reiterate that because these are challenging projects. It's 120 homes, so there's 160, 160 homes. So this is one of the bigger projects, which allowed us to bring down this grant. It's a unique situation, but we do have a, a timing element to this and we don't want to lose those dollars that would go to each of those property owners by way of $12,000. So thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up.
Can I just make another comment about that? I have gotten emails from some of the residents that were there, asking if we could look at trying to curb the cost, the additional cost, and if whether or not the county would look into any creative ways of us being able to help them to reduce the cost. And we're always looking at cost-saving ideas. So I didn't guarantee anything, but we will be looking. But right now, the emergency or what we need to do is be sure to sign everything so we don't lose that $4 million. That's what's important.
Well, and I, I know that you want to speak, Commissioner, but, but to that point, there was some clarity, I thought, at the hearing about whether or not public funds could be used on the private side. And I thought I heard Director Christie say that the public funds, which are paid by the ratepayers, cannot be used to do the private side connection for the residents. So it, it, and, and when you think about it, the ratepayers are coming from all different parts of this county, including Price Hill and, you know, Golf Manor and Crosby Town. I mean, they're all, you know, and so those funds that the ratepayers pay currently are not allowed to be used on the private side. I thought I heard her say that. So I just wanted to bring some clarity to that, so whatever we can do would not be related to that. But if there is, there are other solutions here, I, I think that's something to look at, but I don't want to lose sight of the $12,000, which was a creative solution, which they would have paid otherwise, and we've never been able to do that before. And so this is a really unique and situation for those homeowners.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I wanted to say something because it was not televised. I don't think the meeting was televised. And I wanted to, to highlight some things. One is I do thank MSD for working creatively. This has been, and Health Commissioner Kesterman, this has been going on for 15 years. However, it does take care of the private side of things, but when, we still haven't gotten down to what is it gonna cost? And one of the things I'm big on is affordability. We, we're putting a lot of money in affordable housing, but if you run somebody out their house because it's unaffordable, that's also falls on making sure it's affordable. And there were some assumptions that people can't afford it. It went from $20,000 that it's gonna cost them to $30,000, $40,000, $50,000, $60,000 to tap in. And then these are new ratepayers. So these aren't, MSD will get new ratepayers who are currently, don't have to pay into the system right now because they're not part of the system. So I was asking if we could create something like a TIF, like we do with TIF districts, where not, we're not taking ratepayers from other places. We're taking the new ratepayers that's getting ready to come into the system. And how can they TIF those dollars, for lack of a better word, to be able to help pay to create something for senior citizens in those areas who are on fixed income? I'm not trying to run them out of Madeira, because now they can no longer afford to be there. So I thought that would give us a potential win-win. Now verbally, MSD said something, but I need something by legal counsel that could be looked at by our prosecutor folks, and I'm not just accepting, we say a lot of stuff. We said a lot of stuff couldn't happen in the White House and it's, and it's happening. And they'll say, oh, it wasn't illegal, it's just we just never did it before. I'm looking for the most creative, comb everything we can find to help senior citizens. I'm for freezing senior citizens' property taxes. I don't have the authority. If I did, I would do it immediately. And to me, that's one of the top issues to discuss with the leadership at, at the State House. So it didn't make television, didn't make nothing, I want to make sure it's on record. I don't know if we maybe had a rerun, somebody might have had a cell phone, I don't know. But I would like us to see if, I appreciate the $12,000, but if you're telling me that you saved me 12, but I still got 40, 50,000, and then the response was, well, y'all got time to save. Ain't no money to save. I'm on, if they on a fixed income, they ain't got no money. Who am I to say? We government, we getting paid by the government, we getting paid by the taxpayer, and I'm gonna tell the taxpayer, you need to be able to save up $20,000, $30,000. That's, we can't do that. So maybe we can't do it, but I want to look at everything. And so I was just saying, not taking, I don't want to take ratepayers' money from other areas. I'm saying this is a new group of ratepayers. Is there anything we can put together that could help maybe the seniors that are on the fixed income? If it was something that we could have, and I asked in my meeting with Mr. Aludo, and he said that you all are looking, y'all might be able to look at some other things, and you looked at it years ago, not this, what I just said, but you looked at some stuff, but it's been years ago. And I'm just saying, can we even take a look at it and then get a, get a written legal opinion?
Yeah, Commissioner, we, MSD did respond, I know, to your comment during the hearing, and we talked afterwards that we will get something submitted in writing in response in terms of.
I want the legal.
Research that we.
Yeah, legal. And I want the prosecutor's office to look at it and see if it's legal, not just what MSD tells me. That's, that's what I, that was my point. But I appreciate them being creative.
Okay, so a report will be coming forward from MSD. I mean, I, I don't mean to be disagreeable, but I do trust that MSD knows what they're talking about. It's not, doesn't harm us to have a legal opinion, but they, they do know this. And, and I heard loud and clear that we can't pay for the private side from, with public money and ratepayer money is public money. So I, 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 maybe there are other options out there, or maybe that's an incorrect interpretation. So I guess a report would be helpful. What's the timing of that, Holly? Because this will be in front of us next week.
We're gonna move very fast to get that response back.
Okay.
We do need that legislation coming quickly.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Commissioner Dumis, did you have something?
Two things, since I brought it up. The number one issue is public safety, and our Commissioner of Health was there to say, he's never seen an area so contaminated with sewer and wastewater and all of that. So I realize that with the Commissioner saying that we need to move expeditiously. Also, very considerate of the fact that they said they don't have the money to do it. So we're, as we were saying, trying to look and see how we can help with that. The MSD effort was one way of doing it. And I just wanted to clarify, it was said that the meeting was not televised, it's because of our inability to televise it, and Madeira wasn't on purpose or anything like that, but we always televised, but that's why we didn't televise. So whoever's watching, and I wanted to let them know the circumstances of that.
Thank you. All right, Administrator Aludo.
Commissioners, no by leaves on the agenda today. Did just want to say, had the pleasure of onboarding a few employees this morning. Commissioner Dreehouse, I believe one of them was an intern starting in your office, as well as a individual up in HR, and also several folks over in Job and Family Services today, children's services workers, eligibility technicians, fiscal analysts. So just want, everyone who started today, just wanted to welcome them to the county. So that's my comments today, Commissioner.
Great, thank you for that, Jeff. All right, we are gonna move to the consent agenda, and I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
All right. Briefly on the consent agenda, Commissioners, a resolution, item number one is a resolution adopting the Marine Patrol Assistance Grant through the Sheriff's Office, $7,291. Item number two is a budget adjustment for the general fund, various expenditures in economic development, health and hospitalization levy, the stadium fund, federal grants, non-departmentals, and, and our ERAP, administrative payment to JFS for the administration of ERAP through ARPA. Item number three is, is an award of ITB 111-24. This is an agreement between the Board of Commissioners and United Electric. This is for the repair of the stadium, of the deep well pumps and the replacement of the deep well pumps at Paycor Stadium. at Paycor Stadium, $132,500. These are the pumps that make sure that if the river exceeds flood stage, that the stadium doesn't flood. So that's the purpose of that project. That is a 31% WBE project, by the way, so wanted to make you aware of that. Item number four is a resolution to accept a purchase order with the Abercrombie Group for $1,500. Item number five is a resolution accepting purchase orders of Hamilton County and authorizing their execution and release. This is $3.47 million, includes things like Medicaid, transportation through JFS, JFS parking at the Park House Garage, and the, a lot of this actually is the flow-through of court collections that come through the court that are designated for various, designated by law for various restricted funds under the Clerk of Court's office. Item number six is resolution authorizing the award of ITB 080-24 with cornerstone detention. This is for Phase Two of the Justice Center door and frame replacements at $455,242. Item number seven is a resolution with last mile food rescue. This is through Environmental Services, $5,000 for the purchase of a pallet for moving large amounts of food into a refrigerated container to avoid that food going to landfill. A couple of HR items. Item number eight is a resolution adding two full-time positions to the table of organization. These are a social program coordinator and a grant coordinator in our addiction response area. These are both funded through grants. Item number nine is resolution approving and journalizing the collective bargaining agreement with the FOP, representing the enforcement sergeants and lieutenants, Serb Case 2024 MED 070760. Item 10 is a resolution, this is, these are several JFS items. Item 10 is a contract for the purchase of, it's actually with the Sheriff's Office, but for the purchase of an X-ray machine to replace an old one, $30,166. Item 11 is an agreement between JFS and the board and the Sheriff's Office for criminal screening for caregivers and adult household members, $480,000. Item number 12 is a contract with JFS for video interpretation services, $230,000. And item 13 is an agreement through JFS with Counseling Source, Inc. for psychological assessments, $50,000. A couple more addiction response items. Item 14 is authorization for an agreement with Nanfranks Consulting for $114,400 for family support counseling. Item 15 is an agreement with the Village of Amberly for $124,800. This is for police protection for the family support team expansion of our QRT efforts. Item 16 is requesting authorization to travel at the county's expense to employees in the Treasurer's Office to Columbus, Ohio, and that is the consent agenda, Commissioners.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Summer Dumas.
I have a question, Jeff, about item 11 and the $480,000 for the criminal screening program. Is that a new program or is that additional equipment? Is that just for services rendered? What is that?
There is actually a breakdown in the agreement for how that is funded, staff and on kind of a per-issue charge, but I believe Laura Wolf is probably on the phone. She can probably answer it more directly, or if John is here. I can't see, there's John. I can't, sorry, John, I can't see you behind the pillar there.
No problem, sir. Commissioner, it's for basically ongoing, so we have the contract, so as we need it, we use the service.
So we're using the sheriff to perform this?
The background checks, yes. But, yeah, so, but we do have the systems. Basically, it's the access to the systems to be able to do the background checks as needed, to just make sure when we place kiddos with the families, that they're going back into a safe environment, so.
Yeah, I understand the reason, but I'm just thinking, $480,000 to have the sheriff perform the criminal background check? That seems like a lot to me.
So oftentimes, it's, you know, we're doing it for multiple members in a family. Like, for example, if, and sometimes with how placements work and things like that, they might go from one family to another family. So in that time, all family members will be background checked. So there's a lot of people, I could probably, Laura might be able to give you the exact volume of number of people as well. Yeah.
Laura, we're looking for, there you are.
Hello. Good morning, everybody. And this is a really good question. Thanks, Commissioner Dumas, for raising it. It is a two-year renewal. So this is for two years of services that we work with them on for these background checks.
That makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. I just have one item I'd like to highlight, which is item number six, Phase Two of the Justice Center cell doors and frames. This has been an ongoing project to make the deputies more safe and the people in that Justice Center more safe, so I'm glad to see that moving forward. All right, in that case, I'm going to make a motion to approve of consent agenda items number one through 16.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. There's nothing further, so I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.